Okay, good afternoon. We will call to order this work session of the Board of Trustees for January 14th, 2020, our first meeting of the decade. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Absolutely, Madam President. Trustee Calvert.
Here.
Trustee Cordial.
Here.
President Simon Holland.
Here.
Trustee Kelly.
Here.
Trustee Minneto.
Here.
Vice President Raymond.
Here.
Clerk Taylor, I am here. Student trustee Noble.
Here, Madam.
Thank you, Madam President. Everyone's here. We have a quorum.
Thank you very much. Let's see, how about, Nathan, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Trustee Noble.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Is there public comment? We have no public comment at this time. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
The move.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Is there a second? Second by trustee Minneto. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, motion carries. Okay, and we come to the meat of our work session today, and I just want to start by thanking the trustees and members of the community, employees, students, parents, everyone who has participated thus far in our work to gather information about what we are seeking from our next superintendent. And I do want to note on the record that our interim superintendent is not here for this work session because she intends to be a candidate, and so that would not be proper for her to be here. But we are all extremely engaged, and I think we all recognize that this is really the most important job that the Board of Trustees of this district has to accomplish. So we're very anxious and interested to move forward today. Our item today is presentation, discussion, and possible action to review the summative report of stakeholder feedback gathered by JG Consulting and to provide recommendations, revisions, and/or approval for the superintendent job profile, application, and tentative timeline for upcoming superintendent search milestones. And Emily Ellison and James Guerra are presenting, or is just James? Okay. All right, Mr. James Guerra from JG Consulting, welcome, and you can introduce your colleague.
Good afternoon.
Happy New Year. Yes.
Distinguished members of the Board, Madam President, staff, young man, welcome back. Thank you for having us. For the record, James Guerra with JG Consulting, President and CEO. Finally joining me this afternoon is one of our distinguished faculty members, which I'm very honored to introduce to all of you today, is Dr. Jose Leva. He hails from Tempe, Arizona, an experienced and seasoned retired superintendent, and it was a true testament to his skill set and his experience this week. I think you'll find it funny and also a very warm compliment that some of the folks we've met with this week were kind of poking him and prodding him, saying, hey, are you interested in applying for this superintendency? So I take that as a major compliment as the owner of the firm, and I'm grateful for his participation in this process. So we are excited to present our findings and to review two primary items. So before you, which was provided through the Board docs, were a number of things, the stakeholder list, the stakeholder meetings that have been held, which we're not going to go into major depth about those, but I do want to preface this by saying that the stakeholder meetings will still be ongoing to collect feedback beyond this afternoon. And ideally, we'd like to meet with groups and larger groups, so not necessarily smaller groups, but larger. So our team will be active in continuing to engage with the community, welcoming their feedback and their input as we seek out the next superintendent of schools. So that way, everybody has an opportunity to meet with us, because although we attempted to visit with as many groups as possible, just due to the holidays, time constraints, we were somewhat limited just based on everybody's availability. So we want to open, keep the door open for those that are interested in providing feedback to us as a firm, and we'll continue to update you with what we hear. And if there's anything unique that stands out from what we discuss this afternoon, we'll be sure to call attention to those points, so that way you're aware of what's being said. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, terrific. All right, so let's start with the first document, which is the work plan, the scope of work. And then I will control it here, is that okay, JJ?
You bet.
Okay. All right, so the first page, not to go through the contents, but it's fairly self-explanatory in terms of the order. I'm not going to read this verbatim, you obviously have a copy in front of you, but we heard some consistent themes throughout the stakeholder meetings, both internally and externally. And what we've done is provided a short synopsis and overview for your reference, and you know, I won't read everything, but what I will underscore are the five objectives, which we've articulated to bring us forward as we identify talent to serve here in Washoe County. Those five objectives being the commitment to instruction, alternative educational programs and career pathways, servant leadership, leadership development and staff support, purpose-focused community engagement and inclusion, school board and superintendent collaboration. So very high level, and again, this is a synthesized overview of all of the things that we've heard, but the objectives of which we feel we're looking to accomplish as a team, as a board, and the secondary group that we'll be working with, these are some of the themes that we're trying to capture while we're recruiting talent. Then a recommendation, just beneath that first category, are some things to consider. One of the things that we'd like to recommend is that we encourage the candidates or the lone finalists, if you will, to provide a 90-day entry plan upon his or her hiring. That way, you set some clear goals, whether they be SMART goals, SMART objectives, with a purpose focused around these five objectives that we've mentioned here. And so some of those goals, if you take a deeper dive into what that looks like, continuous improvement of academic performance for each student, pre-K through 12, customization of alternative pathways for post-secondary academic goals and/or careers, implementing new strategies for communication to grow productive district internal and external perceptions and relations, provide greater choice of quality programs and continue specialized programs, promote community inclusion with consistent messaging, implement a renewed plan for engaging new and existing community partners to galvanize support for a new shared vision for Washoe County School District. So that's the first actual page of the report. I'll stop there and ask if there are any questions with regard to this portion of the report.
Yes, Dr. Taylor.
Thank you, Madam President. Hi, and Happy New Year, welcome back.
Happy New Year.
Question, when we talk about under the five objectives, when you've listed leadership development, is that the leadership development of the staff? Is that what that pertains to?
At all levels. So if you think of central office, leadership development, site-based leadership within the principals, APs, and so forth, and if there are site-based coordinators, it's all-inclusive.
Okay, thank you.
James, I think it would be great to give a brief summary of the outreach activities that you did.
Absolutely.
Just so we can have that on the record.
Sure.
I know I have heard from folks who said, gee, nobody called me.
Yeah.
And so I think it'd be great, just to provide for the public.
Okay.
Might be watching.
Sure. JJ, could I ask you, if you don't mind, to pull up any one of the two reports, either the Excel spreadsheet or the Word document? So if you recall, from that document in front of you, a number of suggested and recommended groups that we were asked to connect with, whether it be in-person, telephonic, or virtual. And so if you recall, we've done a number of things, both meeting with staff internally, teachers, leadership team members at varying degrees. So we met with what I would call a number of individuals at a macro level, which consisted of larger group settings, micro group levels, smaller groups, and even individuals depending on availability and the role that he or she might have played here in the greater community. So this list is actually, I'll be frank, much more robust than any of the other executive search firms that we have conducted in the past with regard to superintendent search.
Yeah, I totaled 41 meetings you've held.
There's a, yeah, so in our other search, we totaled 25, just to give you some context. That's running simultaneously to this search, which I think is a true testament to those in the community, both internally and externally, for their willingness to provide candid feedback and input, and wanting to be a part of the process. I think we all agreed from the jump that inclusivity was important, engagement was important, so we made a very concerted effort to meet with as many groups, as many people as possible, even including during the holidays. During our downtime, we had a number of phone calls, virtual meetings, just conversations with as many groups who wanted to share input and feedback. And so I will, you know, reiterate that this will be an organic process. We'd like to continue these meetings, so if those that felt that they weren't given the opportunity to connect with us, our team will be available to them beyond today and, you know, for the time to come as we conduct and conclude the executive search.
Great. And then, how long was the survey open?
It is still open.
Okay, it's still open.
Yeah.
So when did we open the survey?
I don't, the exact date, I'd have to go back and look at transcript of when it was launched, but I can tell you.
It's been weeks, it's been many weeks, yeah.
And again, and a testament to the interest in this particular opportunity and the search that we are conducting as a team, we've had approximately 1,200 responses in the English version. The Spanish version, not nearly as many, however, both surveys are still open.
Okay.
So for anyone watching virtually, if you haven't submitted an online survey, that can be found through the district's web.
Okay, go to the district webpage, and I believe it's been on the front page consistently throughout the time the survey's been open, so.
That's correct.
Great, and that's washoeschools.net if anyone wants to complete the survey and they haven't.
That's correct. Yeah, and again, you know, that's a significantly high volume. 1,200 is well above our average by far, so, you know, we welcome the input and the feedback. As we continue through the work plan, I will make reference again to the survey. So for those who are able to pull this document from the district's board doc, there is a link beneath that category where you can click on it, and it'll take you directly to the survey data. So anybody who's interested in looking at comments, it's entirely anonymous, so those that have submitted or produced a survey, it's protecting everybody's anonymity, so it's still anonymous, but you can see the charts, the graphics, and the feedback, and scroll through everything.
I will note that when I went in, JJ, to the link, the survey results produced some very weird numbers, like, you know, billions.
Oh, okay.
And that might have been, you know, my device, but I just want to make sure that it's, you know, presenting appropriately, so we'll double-check that.
Yeah, we can have our internal web technician take a look at that as well. When I look at it, you know, I look at it from my work laptop, and I don't see anything that's out of the ordinary, but.
Yeah, it's just bizarre.
Yeah, it could be a server issue, but I'll take a look. It is powered by SurveyMonkey, we subscribe to the premium version of that, so it provides real-time data. So every day, if we receive new surveys, myself as the administrator to the portal, I receive instant email notifications saying, you've received X number of new surveys.
Great.
And then the team, of course, will have accessibility to that. As long as you bookmark the URL for anyone who's interested, anytime, from anywhere, you can go and look at the survey data, and we'll keep it up as long, and keep it running as long as you'd like. So as soon as you tell us to just turn it off, that's a click of a mouse.
Good, all right, I'll let you continue.
Okay.
I just want to make sure we're on the record about the outreach efforts and activities.
Sure, no, and again, for those watching and listening this afternoon, please feel free to contact us. You can expect further outreach from us if we have your information, for those we didn't get to reach, we'll try again.
Irene has something she wanted to add. Come to the microphone, please.
For the record, Irene Payne, Chief Communications and Community Engagement Officer. Just for the record, the survey went live the first week of December.
Okay.
Thank you, Irene.
Okay, great, thank you. So we're four-plus weeks in now, yeah, five weeks in. Okay, great, thank you.
Excuse me, Madam President. Members of the Board, if I may, thank you very much for being here. I'm an Arizona lizard, so I'm a little bit cold, okay? So I just opened up the SurveyMonkey, I want your website, it looks like it's working.
It worked okay on your phone?
Yes.
Okay, great, must have been my device.
Yeah, thank you, thank you, Dr. Leva.
Yes, operator error, as Madam Clerk was quick to remind me. Thank you for pointing that out, Dr. Taylor.
I'm here for you.
You are, you've got my back, always. Okay, Mr. Guerra.
All right, so the, now the next page, page four of the document, is a tentative search timeline. And I will, again, before we review the timeline, this isn't a marriage necessarily of what we are saying needs to happen, this is suggested timeline. So this is part of this work session today, is to potentially, or hopefully, arrive to some conclusions about what are the major milestones. So this is just an abbreviated version of our timeline as we proceed in the executive search. So I've outlined the dates that have already passed, and what activities and major milestones were accomplished. You can see right now, we're reviewing the draft application and job profile for school board's approval, but again, this isn't anything that necessarily needs to take action, and this is just for us to discuss, and if there is, we will address that today. Candidate application due, again, not a firm, hard date. March 6th was just the date that was selected based on a previously scheduled board meeting that was found on the board docs. Candidate interviews could tentatively, if agreed upon, be the last two weeks of March, and then.
Which is when we have spring break. Anyway, go ahead.
Yeah, and that's why, you know, we'd like to, we're going to discuss all these little nuances, so please, you know, as things come up, we're going to take notes, and we're going to make changes to a lot of this. And then April, it's just a blanket cover over the entire month. So if we accomplish the interviews in the month of March or not, you know, we could certainly extend naming a lone finalist to the appropriate timeframe. In our thought process, just to give you some context of why we selected these dates, if we name a lone finalist in the month of April, if you recall, when we first started working together, our suggestion is the incoming superintendent, or whoever you choose as your lone finalist, will have ample time to get acclimated, working with the staff, the students, the community, start the engagement meetings, similar to what we're doing, prior to the end of this calendar school year. And then you would still have the summer months to fully immerse yourself in the community, he or she can really settle in, and then be prepared to hit the ground running hard the next calendar school year.
So I wanted to let my colleagues know, just sharing with you, I have a concern that we don't have an adopted job description before we're posting a job. And I did have a conversation with James about this earlier today. You know, in my history, it's a kind of a best practice of HR to have that adopted job description approved before we would, you know, send out the job announcement and post it. The profile is great, it's a, you know, it's a marketing document for outward-facing to attract candidates, but often, and I've been a candidate for senior executive recruitment positions, and, you know, the first thing I want to do is go to the link to find out what the job description is, so that I can understand, what are the things that have been, you know, codified as the expectations of the hiring authority? And I did mention that to Emily as well, and Emily, I don't know if you want to weigh in, I know it's under construction, but I just wanted to alert my colleagues that I, you know, I'm alerting that I have a concern about that. Emily?
Absolutely. I think I have my opportunity to comment. Emily, I'll return to the record. Can I turn off the radio? Sorry, there we go. Emily, I listen for the record. I think you bring up a great point, right? I think there's a lot of information contained in a job description that is not necessarily part of the profile that would be used for advertising and the recruiting process. I think in your email this morning, or in a conversation that we had, we talked about the potential for bringing that job description forward on the 28th, and I really did a little bit of internal wrestling myself to figure out the timing, and felt like it was important for this conversation to happen first, so that we could make sure that the themes that are reflected in the profile are also reflected in the actual job description document. But my goal is to finish those updates based on the conversation had today, bring the job description forward on the 28th, and then as we move forward in the process, James is obviously going to garner a lot of candidate interest that may not result in finalists. And so as we get to the stage where finalists are selected, that's the point at which I believe we would push those candidates into our application system to apply for the specific job description that outlines all of the requirements of the position. So that was kind of my thought process.
Yeah, and I just, you know, again, as a candidate, it's a very time-consuming and risky business to apply for a job, and so I always want to know, I want to know everything that I can if I'm an applicant for something. I want to know everything that's going to be affecting me, because it may affect whether or not I actually apply, and go through all of that work, and risk, you know, because if my employer finds out I'm applying, and, you know, all that stuff. So I had offered that perhaps, because this schedule has the application, the job profile posting going tomorrow, the job being posted tomorrow, absent an approved job description. And as I told James, I mean, that's on us, you know, we haven't had an approved job description, but I just wanted to offer to my colleagues maybe the discussion of waiting until, if that job description comes back to us on the 28th, we could wait until the 29th and to do the posting of the job announcement, so that we have an approved job description before it goes out. But then that would push some things back, so just want to see what everybody else thinks.
Can I just make one additional comment?
Yeah.
I think too, from a recruiting perspective, what you say is absolutely true, right? People want to know all of the requirements, but I know that even absent the final profile, just based on some of the information that James has already gathered about our district, and from you all, and from stakeholders, I suspect, at least, I don't want to speak for James, that outreach has already begun. And so I think from a timing perspective, the investment that a candidate is going to make in engaging with James at this point, without having that official document together, I wouldn't want to slow up that recruiting activity, knowing that we can finalize that document toward the end of the month, and still people will have plenty of time to go through the official application process. So that would be my recommendation.
And also, James has some key dates of national conferences and things.
Correct.
Where he wants to be doing some recruiting, and maybe you could talk about that, James.
Yeah, and I'd like to add to that point, too. So the real magic occurs when the team, myself, Dr. Leva, Dr. Lenada, the others who are engaged, and it's a part of this executive search, occurs when we're visiting and meeting with candidates, whether it be in-person, by phone, or virtually, using our technology and our platform. Because a lot of the context and the information that we're able to share with these individuals will be done that way. A lot of what you see before you, and just even the marketing and the advertising piece, the job profile itself, is simply that. And it's an opportunity for us to cast a wide net through all of our various outlets, you know, the advertising channels we'll use, we'll redirect the candidates back to our website, where we have a server where they can upload their artifacts, their letters of interest, resume, academic transcripts, all of those components they wish to share with us. But when we meet with candidates, such as some of these national conferences that trustee Holland has mentioned, those are coming soon. We have two national conferences, the month of January, at the end of the month, and then the American Association of School Administrators Conference, which is the largest affiliation of, you know, the state affiliates, the umbrella, is taking place mid-February in San Diego. And there's actually a job fair where they invite the executive search firms to have what we call speed dating opportunities with candidates. You literally walk into the convention hall, they have a designated area where candidates can come look at a job board. It's literally a bulletin board with pinned job profiles such as this. What we'll do is include the final iteration of this profile and pin that on the job board. Candidates will register for time, sign up for time to speak with us, and we just go one by one. I mean, it's a rapid fire of, you know, short 15, 20, 30-minute interviews with candidates. So point being, we'd like to strike while the iron's hot, and not to circumvent the internal process, because we recognize that the application that is needed here internally is a requirement of the district. Our process is simply to advertise, begin the recruitment, the vetting, and the screening, and garnering that interest, and doing it in a way that will enable us to meet some of these major milestones. But again, not married to the timeframe, but just wanted to state that the magic really occurs with us, you know, going to superintendents that aren't necessarily looking for a job, and recruiting them away from his or her respective role.
Other thoughts, trustees? Dr. Taylor?
Thank you, Madam President. James, thank you for that, as well as Emily. So James, what are, so in what you just said, if the job description is not approved until the January 28th meeting, what kind of impact, or does that have an impact on your ability to recruit? Because it sounds like you take the profile out, and that would not have an impact. If the job description isn't approved, and therefore isn't posted, does that have a direct impact? Because I'm certainly hearing what President Simon Holland is saying, in that, you know, we want to be as complete as we can.
Absolutely.
As an applicant, a potential applicant is looking at, what does this mean? What could this mean for me? But, you know, as well, we don't want to miss those opportunities, those recruitment opportunities.
Sure, sure, and it, you know, it's at the pleasure of the Board, so if you so choose to have both the job description that Emily and her department are completing for your approval, to run simultaneously to the job profile, to start at the same time, that's perfectly fine. Our recruitment is still ongoing. You know, there was a question yesterday asked of me by the local TV station, you know, what kind of interest have you had? And, you know, I can tell you, in fairness, approximately 20 or so individuals from around the country have had direct contact with us, expressing interest, and they're expressing their intention to apply for the job. So we can still meet and have these engagements with, you know, respective candidates, potential candidates at the various conferences, and we'll continue to do that. That's no burden on us. I just want to be clear that should we try to meet a specific milestone to allow for the candidate to have some working knowledge prior to the end of the school year, work with the staff, the community, and the students, you know, it could just delay that. And with the month of May, I haven't, forgive me, I haven't looked at your graduation dates and looked ahead of past testing and all of those other milestones that you have as a district. Trying to avoid some of those things are also, in our eyes, important, because everybody's busy during graduation time, and then there's summer break, you have Memorial Day weekend, there's quite a bit, you know, and of course, trustee President Holland suggested that, you know, this could run into spring break.
Sixteenth through twenty-seven.
Okay, yeah, so there's just a lot to consider, but, you know, our work never ends, you know, it's a tireless activity on our part, so we have a number of engagements. And I know that when I first introduced the team without him being here, Dr. Leva represents the Association of Latino Administrators and Superintendents as their executive director, and they have a cohort right now of aspiring superintendents, so he's busy amongst all the other things he's currently engaged in, so just to give you some context.
Other thoughts, anyone else?
Yes, thank you.
So it sounds like it would not be a deal-breaker to move forward to post it, but let's keep with the January 28th to get that job description approved. And I appreciate that having all of this input helps inform that job description, but we don't want to miss any opportunities to do some recruiting, but we do have, I think, a responsibility to any prospective candidates to be expeditious in getting that job description approved. Okay?
And when we speak with the candidates, if I may, what we'll do is we'll convey to them that we are working with the district, and we'll have that job description available, so we'll convey that to them as we're speaking with them, so they'll have an additional set of information to reflect on.
Okay. So we're still on the timeline, and I don't know if, you said the mid-February was an important conference that you were going to be at, and I'm not sure if we have a February 14th deadline for applications, if that's going to be practical. I don't know why we couldn't extend that application deadline out to like the 28th of February.
Yeah, we certainly could. It's just our practice standard for us is to have a 31-day posting, a full calendar month, so I just counted from that posting date to, and then arrived at the 14th.
Yeah.
But we've done postings for as few as three weeks to as long as 45 days or even longer. And again, it's a decision that, as a board, you're well within your rights to tell us what you prefer, and then we'll keep it open as long as needed.
Well, as we know, you know, 90% of the applications will come in the last week.
Absolutely.
But. But if there are important conferences where you're going to be talking to people, we don't want to deprive them of the opportunity to have time to complete an application.
Absolutely.
So, I would just throw that out, that maybe we move the candidate applications due to February 28th. Or we could even make it February 21st. I don't, you know, whatever you all think. I just want to make sure we can capture those conferences. Dr. Taylor?
Thank you, Madam President. That would fall in line, in my opinion, to making sure the interviews don't occur until after spring break.
Right, yeah.
Because that's a two-week period as well.
Yeah.
And so, that still gives the same amount of time from when applications are due to when we would hopefully interview, because we don't want to do that during spring break.
We do not, we do not.
And spring break, according to my calendar, ends on the 31st.
Right.
If I have it correctly.
Yeah, it's the 16th through the 27th and then weekends, yeah.
So, I mean, so it ends on the 30th, well, we're back in on the 30th. And so, that's a two-week period that we won't want to do anything in terms of engaging with the public anyway. So, if we back that up two weeks, we fall there anyway. So, I think that makes sense, bottom line, to bounce to that two weeks.
So, maybe we could do the candidate applications due on the 28th and then meeting with the school board and presenting the candidates for in-person interview selections. March 6 wouldn't give you enough time, but could you do it like on the 10th where we have, we have a board meeting scheduled on the 10th? And then do candidate interviews with the school board, maybe 3:31 to 4:14 within that period? I'm just offering to my colleagues, yes. Vice President Raymond?
I just had a clarification question. When you say the candidate interviews with the school board, is that a one-on-one with each individual school board member or is that a public meeting?
Yeah, it's a public interview. And then we can talk about the structure of that today as well and the format of the interviews. But that's when you interview the candidates here.
Okay.
Yeah. And we'll be here as a team, but, you know, we'll be sitting with the community members and staff and anyone who's here physically. But the board will interview the candidates.
So, I know the National Association of School Boards' annual meeting is that first week of April, too. So, we may need to avoid that.
So, maybe the 14th? We could shoot for the 14th of April?
To begin the interviews.
Well, that would be, I mean, I don't, well, yeah, let's talk about that. Are we talking about two rounds of interviews?
So, true to form for us, so again, we're going to have the opportunity to present candidates preliminary when we present the candidates using the on-demand interviews. So, it's not to replace any of the in-person interviews. So, you're going to see the candidates and have an opportunity to somewhat get to know them before you choose to invite them in for an in-person interview. So, that's technically, I would consider that round one for those that meet the minimum qualifications of the job description.
And that was previously the March 6th date?
Correct. And we moved that to suggested March 10th is what I have.
I'm just offering that because that's a date we have a meeting and we could just make, we could meet earlier.
That works for us, but, okay. Okay, so that sounds good.
So, that's round one.
Okay. So, that's just the presentation portfolios of the candidates. So, if you recall our process, we will present the top 10 candidates of the total talent pool. So, we can take a hypothetical number of 50. So, we'll present the top 10 of the 50 as Group A. And then Group B will be the delta, whatever the remaining balance is. And in this case, if it is 50, it'll be 40. So, at that point in time, when we're presenting the candidates, each of you will have access to, everybody will have access to the on-demand interviews, the artifacts that have been provided to us by the candidates. And we're going to organize everything that will make a lot more sense when you see it in front of you.
Now, just, again, in deference and respect to potential candidates, all of that will be on the public record here. So, anybody who's in that group is going to have to be willing to have their name be on the record.
That's correct.
Okay. What would be the role of the group that's going to be your selection input group, the community folks? What's, yeah, yeah, we weren't using that word per, yeah, they're advising James.
Advisory good for them.
Yes.
Sure. Yeah, so the, we as a team are referring to that group as the Executive Search Committee.
Okay.
If those words are fair, it's just, it's easy.
Yeah, yeah.
So, yeah, yeah, and it's pretty generic. So, we're working with them. In fact, we had our first kickoff meeting with the selected search committee members yesterday.
Oh, good, okay.
So, the process has already started as far as that's concerned. And so, the goals, the expectations, the nondisclosure agreement confidentiality oath, all of those things that are important to us and to you were executed with each of them yesterday.
Okay.
And so, they are intimately involved. And I want to thank them, if any of them are watching this meeting, because I think they realized yesterday how much work and sweat equity will go into this process. So, I, you know, I joked with them as we were ending the meeting, be careful, be careful what you wish for, right? But they're a tremendous group. We're excited and we're thankful to their, for their support and honored that they are willing to help us in this.
And just to clarify for the public record, those folks have been applicants to James and James and his team are making the decisions about who serve on that committee. They are advisory to the consultant and not to the board. But I think we will want to provide the list of who those people are, and we should make sure they know that they will be.
Okay, absolutely. What I can offer is to provide that list after today's meeting. I can send it.
Just, you know, it's a matter of public record.
Sure, absolutely. I'll provide that to JJ and to Emily and to Neil. And however, that's distributed through the district channel.
Right, I appreciate that.
But yes, as a reminder, and I can share with you that our process, we treated selecting and identifying the search committee members just as we would a traditional search for us. We posted the search committee application. We actually required that they complete a small on-demand interview. So, that way, we get to know who they are because we, you know, didn't meet with all of these individuals prior. Some of them we didn't know at all. So, it just gave us an opportunity. They had to submit their resume and had to, you know, have, you know, some criteria for us for our identification for selection.
And then they will be helping you narrow down who the candidates are to present to us.
That's correct.
So, they would be meeting with you between February 28th and March 10th to be able to develop that list. That's not a lot of time. That's not a lot of time.
Yeah, and they're aware of the time constraint. They know the commitment. But we have regular check-ins, weekly check-ins established. We will have two, what we decided as a team yesterday collectively, we will have two in-person meetings, working with each other. The work session where we identify who the upper echelon, the top 10 are, is a fairly long meeting, you know. In previous experiences, that meeting can take anywhere from six to eight hours. It's a full day.
Given the time constraints on the backend, I'm thinking we should have the candidate applications due on February 21st instead of the 28th. Because if you're going to bring those candidates for in-person interview selection, present those on March 10th, and you're going to need to meet with the selection, the search committee, your search committee, as soon as the applications are due, that's only going to give them 10 days, so.
If I may?
Yeah, please.
Part of that, James, so once the search committee working with you, narrow, let's take that number as you say, let's say there's 50 applications, right? And then, and so, they're going to work together and you come up with, there are 10 people that we think we want to present to the board. And then we know that means it's coming to us, so it's going to be public. Are those 10 applicants then notified in advance? I would assume that they are, because I think that would also take a little bit of time as well to let candidate, you know, X know that, hey, it's going to go public. So, that gives candidate X an opportunity to speak with whomever, their board, their supervisor, their, whatever the case may be. So, I think that we might, we need to allow for a little bit of time for that to happen as well. So, that might speak towards, you know, maybe going with the 21st for the deadline to give another week, because we certainly want to be respectful of those 10, wherever the line is drawn, but let's just think that.
Right, yeah, and you're accurate. That statement is correct. So, they will be notified. And of course, you know, the scenario, you know, we can just play this as a hypothetical. If you're a sitting superintendent, you have, you know, you have an obligation, a duty to inform your current employer that you are a candidate and you're in the top, in top consideration for the opportunity. And it's the right professional courtesy, but we'll have ongoing conversations with the candidates and they'll be keenly aware of the timeline and the milestones. So, that way, in their minds, they can envision when they need to start preparing to have these conversations. And we're very thorough in the way we communicate with the candidates. So, I can assure you that there won't be any loose ends when it comes to that. But the more time also for these committee members and what we promised them yesterday was that we'd give them enough runway and enough notice because professionally and personally, they all have a lot of commitments like we all do. So, we want to be mindful of their schedules because they're, this is a voluntary role for them and that's not lost on us. I mean, we know how busy they are and they're an impressive, an impressive group.
Okay. Trustee Noble has something he wants to add.
So, up until the point that we release the top 10 finalists to the public, what steps are you going to, or planning on taking to protect candidate anonymity? That way, people still want to apply even if they don't make it. That way, their boss doesn't find out and fire them because they're applying somewhere else.
Sure. Common practice for us in a state where there's open meeting laws, we technically do not open the actual application packets until the deadline is reached. What we can do is accept letters of interest or inquiries. And if somebody verbally commits to say, we intend, or I intend to apply for this position, we're able to begin the vetting and the screening process then. And then we have it, you know, we have our criterias and our, you know, litmus checks to really ascertain whether he or she is serious or if they're just kind of teasing the waters. But that's the, truly the best way to do it. In some cases, what we've seen in the past, too, if somebody sends a hard copy of their application materials to our address, we do not open the applications until the deadline is reached. Because if that information is opened, then we are, as your consultants, required to provide that information as public.
I don't think so. I don't think it becomes a matter of public record until it's coming to us and as it should, when it's coming to us. We want it to be a matter of public record. Neil, can you comment on that?
And that's something General Counsel and I should perhaps discuss, but I can tell you that's.
Yeah, anything that's sent to you isn't necessarily public record.
Yeah. I feel like I'm working in a vacuum. I need to understand the process a little bit better. So, why don't we sit down and talk?
Okay.
You can give me a call.
Yeah, and that's, and I'm using this as, you know, from previous experiences, how we've managed, just to ensure confidentiality of the candidates. But we're not, we're not married to that process. So, if you have ideas, suggestions or preferences, you know, we're open-minded. But I'll certainly work with General Counsel to ensure that we're compliant.
Yeah, we want to make sure that we are as transparent as we are required to be and we don't want to jeopardize anyone by releasing information prematurely. Nathan?
Just a quick follow-up. This might not be a question that you can answer at the moment, but I am curious what degree of separation there needs to be specifically between the members of the board and the search process in general to avoid having information relayed to you beyond the public record, just in general.
Yeah, there's a statement in the job profile that we'll get to next, but it's, and we communicate this to the candidates, but we encourage the candidates to not communicate to the trustees directly. So, if there's any, if there's any questions or concerns or whatever have you, if you're a candidate, their expectation is they come to us only. And so, the communication is managed and handled by the executive search firm and the search committee. Does that answer your question?
It's a good question. Thank you, Nathan. Trustee Kelly, oh, go ahead. Neil, do you want to?
Just quickly, if JJ was texting, shot me a text about the date and the noticing for the 10th meeting, I guess we would have to notice them on the 4th. It would, is that how we're doing this, by our normal process? So, that means the names of whoever's going to be considered would be released then?
Yeah, the agenda would be posted March 4th for a March 10th meeting.
Just so we're all working on the same page. I thought that was important. It was very important.
Thank you.
All the more reason to move back that application due deadline. And in fact, the only reason I had suggested moving it to the 28th was if we were going to move the posting of the job profile, which we aren't. So, trustee Kelly?
Thank you, Madam President. On that last statement about having that separation between us and the candidates that are applying, and of course, that makes total sense, but then what, how do we handle when an existing employee, like the interim superintendent or any other that we work with on a daily basis? How do you envision then, how do we have a separation between us and that person or those people when we work with them and see them all the time? Like, what's your recommendation for that?
Right, so, you know, obviously, you're going to be having some sort of working relationship, you know, day-to-day with the interim and any other candidate that may come forward internally. And it's okay to still have conversations, you know, you don't have to avoid them at the water cooler, if you will. But what we would say, and we will have a conversation with the interim superintendent because we're keenly aware that she intends to apply, and we'll explain to her what the process entails and what the expectations are in terms of the communication between her and the board and with us. So, those conversations will take place immediately once the application is launched.
And I think just for our part, the important thing is to not be discussing the process with any candidate or, you know, their qualification specifically being a topic of conversation. And I think the interim superintendent has been really very, very bright-line clear about that. Even when I have accidentally copied her on an email, she will reject the email and say, shouldn't have copied me on this one because this is about the search process. So, she's being scrupulously clean about that and I appreciate that.
Good. No, that's a great question. So, we'll just promote and encourage that any candidate, whether internal or external, come directly to us and not to the trustees.
So, then let's talk about this. So, I think I was a little bit confused in the candidate interviews with the school board where it says March 13th to the 31st. That's really just a date, right? It's just one day that we're talking about and you would propose that it might be in that timeframe?
So, going back to your original question about the number of rounds, so, again, based on our best practice, let's just say, again, and these are hypotheticals, out of the top 10, let's say you arrive to inviting six of the 10 candidates or whatever that number may be. I'll just say six for time's sake. You choose six candidates. Round one, if we do six interviews, we'd like to encourage that you consider doing two consecutive days, three and three to avoid fatigue because the interviews, you know, they can be exhaustive for you and for the candidates. So, we want to be mindful of your time. So, you can stagger the interviews if there are six over two consecutive days. That would be round one. Now, from round one, if you are undecided and you, you know, the board doesn't land on a lone finalist in round one, which is rare if you do, but it's okay if you don't, you would most likely have a round two of in-person interviews. And that typically consists of the top two or three of the first six. And that's, again, just based on our practice. Now, we're not married to that, that once we get to this point, this is entirely your choice to make as a board. But that final round, round two, we've seen where candidates will bring his or her spouse or significant other, have an opportunity to get to know them at a little bit higher level, you know, more personally. Sometimes there's a meal that's shared between you and the candidates, and we'll help manage all the logistics. And then there's also the opportunity for perhaps a district visit where the candidate is currently serving. I know we haven't talked about that, but that's also a common practice.
And we've also, go ahead and finish.
Yeah, sorry. So, those are the three likely scenarios, you know, without having a crystal ball, you know, that's, two weeks I know is in a, you know, the 13th through the 31st is in an enormous amount of time. But it is feasible if we give enough runway and we plan ahead accordingly.
Well, and again, those two weeks are off the chart.
No, yeah, I'm just, yeah, right, right.
So, we could be looking at the 31st to the 14th. And I just wanted to flag that we have talked about it, and I'm certainly in favor of us having some sort of a community meet and greet where lots of people can meet, if we're down to, you know, two or three finalists, where lots of folks can meet those people too. Because this is, this is a community decision and a very, very big one. So, want to make sure there's time for that, perhaps the night before final interviews. Other comments? Andrew, you had your?
Yeah, I was going to just mention the community forums. So, that's important and the timing, not just the interview itself in here, but when and where are those forums happening so that the candidates know how long they're going to be here during that time? And if there's two rounds, are they leaving and coming back? And so, we have to think about that. Because if, let's say, one of our finalists is from Florida and we're going to fly Because if, let's say, one of our finalists is from Florida and we're gonna fly him out to Reno and then in a week and a half fly him back out to Reno, is that necessary? So I think we have to really think about how we really want to put this together so we're not fatiguing the process when we really don't need to do that potentially.
And of course, oh, go ahead, Vice President Raymond. I was just gonna say, again, and I've been through several senior executive search processes in the public sector, and I wouldn't call them forums because that's really a lot to subject an applicant to. I think it's great for folks to, on the public record, to be able to, you know, meet people. But I just don't want us to have an inquisition of our poor candidates when they, you know, when they haven't had the job yet. Absolutely the opportunity to meet and be involved with the community. But the way I've experienced it is when there are six finalists, we do six meetings on Thursday and we bring people back potentially on Friday and we make the decision on Friday. I mean, that's the process that I've been involved in eight or nine times, not as a candidate, don't worry. But couldn't find a job. No, no, that wasn't the case. But I know you all have a different experience and I just, I'm sensitive to the travel issue of bringing people back and forth and the tension that it creates when people don't know for another two weeks what's happening and they're going back to their employer and their employer is trying to sweeten the pot to keep them from leaving if they like them. You know, all that stuff happens over that kind of time period. So just want to throw that out there. Vice President Raymond?
Well, thank you. I think I'm mostly kind of stuck on the, I guess, the urgency to complete all of this in April even. And I understand, I think you made really good points about the benefits of having a candidate, a permanent superintendent in place before school's out and they're, you know. But I worry a little bit about rushing things to get us there. And March just is this tricky month for us with only one board meeting. I mean, we could certainly do things outside of that Tuesday, the 10th. But I, thinking more about that date being sort of this critical point, if that's when we're gonna have a work session where we go through the candidates, that top 10 group. Working backwards from what JJ has said, if we're noticing it on the 4th and then looking backwards to when we would want to give candidates the opportunity to public or notify their employers, I just worry then that that's the problem date and that we, what would it look like if we moved that to April? I know then that pushes everything out like a month. But it just feels like that sort of gives us a little bit of breathing room to then look at everything else after that point. If we wanted to give them one week to, you know, notify whomever, if they're the top 10 candidate, that puts us at February 26th. And if this group is, the candidate applications due the 21st, that gives five days for that group, your committee, to review 50 or whatever. And I haven't ever been in your seat or the seat of a person going through a search this large or in this seat, trustee, going through it. So this is all new to me. But I've sat on scholarship committees and reviewed hundreds of scholarships, you know, that's different. But I'm the type of person that I could get them one week beforehand, but I'm not going to actually read them probably until the day or two beforehand and make the time for it. But, so I don't know what your feelings are about that and what the fellow trustees are thinking.
Well, and selfishly, I want to again share, my dear husband booked a trip for me, April 23rd to May 13th. So I will be all over Europe and not be accessible by email or phone. And I apologize for that. As you all know, we had some issues in our family. We were supposed to take the trip last year and we weren't able to. So that really, and I would very much like to be a part of this process. So that kind of puts a wrinkle on things. And I don't want the whole process to be revolving around that. I am respectful of the fact that once we get into May and June, things are a crunch for those candidates as well, where they are in their own jobs. I'm not sure who was first, trustee Cottle and then Dr. Taylor?
Yeah, so depending on, I know it's a time crunch, but we do have a board meeting day scheduled for March 31st. We should, we could just move the budget work session off of that day and we could do the initial review that day. So it gives plenty of time. And then we could do like April 14th and 15th for interviews. And it still gets us, it's before President Simon Holland's trip. It's in April. It's not this timeline, but it's close. And then it gives your working group some time to review everything. It avoids spring break. It gets us there. So, yeah, so we do have a meeting scheduled for the 31st and we could do a work session that day to review the online profiles. And then two weeks later, do a work session before a board meeting on the 14th and the 15th, come back for another work session and make a decision.
There's that. And then there's also, again, the reason we were pushing the candidate applications was because we were, I was worried about the job description. But we've, you know, we've abolished that as an issue. So the candidate applications could still be due on February 14th. And then we could still have the, presenting the candidates for in-person interview selections on the 10th. That, you know, that's, you know, that's almost four weeks. And then, and then have the candidate interviews, just, you know, just throwing those out as well. But I like, I like your suggestion as well, trustee Cottle. Dr. Taylor?
Thank you. I was just going to add that I like, I think I would prefer, for two reasons. Well, I would prefer to, the timeline that was here, if we can keep, if February 14th, March 10th seems to still work, it doesn't feel very crunched as much. It is sensitive to spring break and to most of the candidates, who knows who we're going to get, will certainly have an educational tie in those last couple of months of the school year. Certainly do get crunched. And then just, this is a totally personal note as well, I am performing a wedding in Bali, Indonesia.
Oh, that's right.
And I'll be gone from April 16th through the 22nd. Could not tell them when to get married. I tried, but I could not. And I've actually been asked to perform the wedding. So that's right up against yours. And, but that isn't why I prefer the earlier days. I just think that timeline times us out better. And it doesn't, it takes care of, it doesn't feel crunched and those things that we were talking of. And it still allows them to take advantage of those really important recruiting opportunities. So maybe since we've, since Emily has made us feel a little bit more comfortable about the job description as well as James, maybe we fall back to where we were.
So you were, you would be saying then candidate applications due February 14th, meet with school board and present the candidates for in-person interview selections March 10th?
Yes.
And then the candidate interviews with the school board would happen sometime between the 31st and April 14, 15-ish?
Uh-huh, yes. And that would avoid, that would avoid spring break and it would, which we certainly, we know we must do that. We must do that. And it would still give an adequate amount of time for those, for those candidates that will be finalists and that maybe they'll stand to have those conversations. Those are, we want to be respectful of those conversations that they need to have with their employees, with their employers, school boards, communities, what have you.
Trustee Cottle, and then before we decide anything, I know we have some public comment.
Yeah, one thing I was thinking about, we had briefly touched on candidate meet and greets. And so if we were to have an initial in-person interview with six to 10, we probably don't want to come back the next day and make a decision because I'm sure the community wants to have meet and greets with whoever we pick as our top two or three. So we probably want to give it a day or two or three, depending how those meet and greets work. And so that timing, we'd have to think about as well. If we're gonna do a Tuesday, we don't want to come back on Wednesday because then we're not doing meet and greets.
No, we would do the meet and greet on Monday.
With everyone, all six to 10 or whatever? Okay.
And then have the, and then have, or, or if we do a two-step-
Yeah.
Then we would do the meet and greet on a Monday with three people, for example, and have the finalist interviews the next day.
Yeah, it's just something that we think about in the timing so that we do, because I do think it's important to have the meet and greets and I've heard that multiple times.
I do as well. Dr. Taylor?
Thank you, Madam President. And I would say I have, I've been on the, not the board side, but on the community input side, if you will, on several educational president searches. And I'm actually involved in the one for the university here now. And in those cases, when necessary, I've done three, actually. And in those cases, we have, depending, we have, when necessary, brought candidates back, you know, if, again, if necessary. And that's certainly, you might want to bring, some, the one finalist may be from Florida. But what I found is actually cheaper for me to fly to Indonesia than it is to Boston. Go figure, right? But I think if that's, if that's necessary to do a two-step process to give, make sure our community does have time to get involved in those, I think that is absolutely a critical piece. And I think, I know we all agree upon that. If that's necessary, then to me, that's, that's an airline ticket worth buying. So that we can do this thing right. This is the absolute single most important thing that we do. And I think taking every step that's necessary to have the input, having a little time in between there allows us for the, for the community to have conversations with candidates and then for us to get some input from that. Because if they just come meet and greet and then we don't hear from them, you know, we just met and greet, met and greet, you know, no. You know?
Yeah.
Right. Counsel, help me.
Why don't we have public comment? Todd Bailey? Mr. Bailey?
Thank you, Madam President. And in general, I do concur with most of the comments that you've made about the process. I wish we were a little more prepared as you do, but, you know, timelines are what they are. We submitted a public information request regarding the process of the superintendent's search and that request was denied. The questions are of public importance and they seek to clarify important aspects of the superintendent's search that you voted to currently engage in. The questions, some of which were answered verbally during the meeting, which is absolutely fine, I can accept that, no problem. But there were two that were not. First of all, regarding public records, applications, videos, and documents, are those public records and must they be preserved? Sounded like even trustees were a little foggy about that one in the discussion I heard. But the important one is, to me, is can the board select a candidate in the pool of applications that is not recommended for the 10 finalists by the search consultants? Can you do that? Look, these are reasonable questions that the district has invited as part of the most non-transparent process allowed under the law. Maybe. Our request was denied on a technicality. We mistakenly used the word opinion versus legal position in the subject line. Okay? And the legal office has correct legally. Nevada law prohibits any public institution, we deal with this all the time at the Secretary of State's office, we do not ask people in the public sector for their legal opinion, but we do for their legal position. Because that's how you have an open and honest dialogue. You have to know what the heck you guys are talking about. And we are not lawyers. We are not here to challenge the legal office. That is the office this board is designated to receive requests to clarify these kind of legitimate questions. And this type of response has the effect of ending the conversation. We can just make assumptions. This decision is going to be tested and we're trying to help. This response kind of clarifies the fact that it's not exactly transparent. What's interesting about the whole incident is I've been accused of seeking legal advice after being accused of trying to be a lawyer, after asking questions about the process that is the most non-transparent under Nevada law that you voted for. I really am looking for an answer to that question. Can this board pick a candidate in the pool that is not part of the 10 finalists the consultants recommends? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bailey. I think that part of the reason we have not had clarification about all of the steps of the process is that we had to have this discussion in order to have those steps of the process clarified. And we're having that discussion only on the public record as a group. That discussion isn't taking place anywhere else. It's only taking place here in a public meeting, in an agendized, publicly noticed meeting of public record. But yes, we will make sure that the question gets answered that was asked by trustee Noble, which was an excellent one about the nature of when things become a matter of public record and are publicized. And we'll continue to look to counsel for that. Trustee Cottle?
So based on what we've been talking about, it sounds like we like March 10th as the date to review the videos and then potentially March 31 for any initial interviews and then either have finalists come back the next week, the first week of April, or around when our next scheduled board meeting would be, which would be the second week of April and then that doesn't conflict with any trips or spring breaks. Just kind of sounds like that's what we're all leaning towards, but just want to put some dates on it.
The first week of April, Vice President Raymond reminded us, is the National School Board and that may be difficult for some candidates.
So then that would be, that would put us right back at our next scheduled meeting timeframe. So we obviously want to have time for meet and greets. But it kind of sounds like what we're leaning towards.
Sorry, just quickly, the School Board Association is, or you were gonna say that, sorry. The weekend, it starts that weekend? So the 31st might be okay. It starts the third, fourth. Do I have that right? So we-
Madam President, members of the board, I looked it up, it's March 16th through 18th.
Oh.
In SBA?
Mm-hmm.
You might want to double check, that's what I just saw. If I may, I have April 3rd through the 6th.
Yeah.
That's what I had.
Are we all looking at 2020?
Chicago.
Yeah.
It's Chicago. My bad. I have it in a Dropbox file. I have a calendar.
Yeah, the 3rd through the 6th.
The 3rd through the 6th.
Okay. So 31st could work. 31st could be okay.
As well as the, if we go into the first, Madam President, if I may, if we go into the first full week of April after the 6th, the 6th is a Monday. So there's still more days that week.
Yeah.
If we wanted to do more in terms of, so we don't have to necessarily bounce to the 14th. We could look at the 7th, 8th, 9th, 10th, if necessary.
I only brought up the first week of April because as President Simon Holland said, how much time do we want in between an initial conversation? And you're a finalist, well, in that two weeks, that school board or that supervisor did something to make them stay and then they say they don't want to come back and then we're kind of scrambling.
And I think that's why it's important to note that the 6th is on the Monday, the 31st is the previous Tuesday, the 6th is that the National School Board Conference ends on the 6th. So that does leave time in that following week for follow-ups.
Madam President, I just want to remind the trustees, timing-wise, the tentative budget for the district is due on April 14th or April 15th. It will go before the board for approval on the 14th. And that work session on the 31st is the last chance for a real deep review of it.
Yeah, well, we may have to add some additional time. Yeah, trustees may have to. This is, again, two of the most important things we do, so. Yes, no, I appreciate that. Yes, it is. And, yeah. Okay. So we have, I think we want to take formal action on this. So we have, I think we want to take formal action on this. I think we need to be a little bit flexible about the, the last two steps in the process because right now, the, the assumption is that we would have two rounds of in-person interviews with the board, and those would be different weeks potentially, depending on how many we have, how many applicants we have that make it to that in-person interview level. So we will, I think, let's just, let me summarize what I think we're doing, and then we can take a motion for that with the caveat that if circumstances change, we would have to come back and have a vote on that publicly to change it. Does that make sense? So we will keep the January 15th date for the application and the job profile to be posted, and we have yet to talk about the application and the job profile, but that, we'll keep that on January 15th. We will keep the candidate application deadline at February 14th. We will target the meeting with the school board and presenting the candidates for in-person interview selections on March... And then we would, we would intend to have the first round of candidate interviews with the school board no earlier than March 31st, and potentially a second round the 7th, on or around April 7, 8. Is that correct?
9, 10. 10 is Friday.
Okay, so the, so April 7th through 10th would be candidate interviews, second round, if needed, of candidate interviews with the school board. Does that work? Yes, Mr. Cottle?
So it sounds like then both of those in-person interview dates would be special meetings or work sessions, because it looks like March 31st is full with a budget work session and a regular board meeting. And then the week after, there would be no regular scheduled board meeting. So we would just then decide, and then we would have to work with legal on when agendas got to be posted.
Mm-hmm, and noticing.
And noticing, so we don't have to cancel a meeting because we didn't get that done correctly.
Correct. Okay, yes, Dr. Taylor?
Thank you, Madam President. President, just one question. Do we want to say definitively no earlier than March 31st? I'm okay with that, but I just, I was trying to stay away from a firm date, because what if it turns out that, oh, heck, we can have a work session on the 27th? Totally making this, oh, no, that's spring break.
Spring break, that's why I was...
Right, right, right.
Yeah, we wanted to block out...
And then the 31st, that Monday, that's kind of...
Yeah, we wanted to block out.
Okay, I understand. So yes, we do want to say that definitively.
Okay, okay. And we can have a separate motion on process details such as having community meetings, community meet and greet. So, okay, does everybody understand that proposed schedule? Does anyone want to make that motion?
I'll take a stab, Madam President.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Taylor.
I move that the Board of Trustees accepts the timeline submitted by J.G. Consulting with the, with the changes to the meet and greet, the meet with the school board and the on-demand interviews changed from March 6th to March 10th. And the in-person candidate interviews with the timeframe of no earlier than March 31st through April 10th.
Okay. Should we say March 30th, just to be...
March 30th, no earlier than March 30th?
Yeah, March 30th.
I'll amend that before there's a second.
Because of the, because of the conflict on the 31st with other things.
That's what I was trying to say.
Yeah, I know, you were.
Thank you, now you have my back. Okay, no earlier with the on-demand interviews occurring, one or two as necessary on-demand interview, in per, oh, the on-demand interviews occurring on March 10th, and the in-person interviews, one or two as, as needed, occurring no earlier than March 30th through April 10th.
Okay, all right. Second by Trustee Cottle, is there any other discussion on that schedule? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye, any opposed? Motion carries, great. Okay. Okay, now, let's keep going.
Nicely done. Good work.
Let's go to our application and our et cetera. Yeah, and if you need to take a break, go ahead, that's, yeah, we just want to keep plowing ahead. Oh, man.
It's my last day, I gotta...
That's right, that's right. Okay. Vice President Raymond's taking notes. What do you, where do you want to go next, James?
Well, the, we're still reviewing the, the scope of work, the work plan. And so it's, my eyesight's fairly good, but it's hard for me to read. But what I, what I will do, rather than just reading each of the bullets, what we've done is just taken a comprehensive overview in the three categories, the, you'll see on those columns, they're arranged by trustee, staff, and then the community. You'll see that there's a footnote next to the community, but this is where we, we've teased out some of those common themes that we alluded to earlier. So for those interested in looking at what we've heard, this is, again, just a very synthesized way for us to demonstrate and to articulate what we've heard across, you know, all the various different categories. And we'll continue to have these meetings, as I, as we stated earlier. So this will be a work in progress, and we'll just treat this organically. And if anything comes to us that is unique from what we've already heard, we'll bring it to your attention and to the community's attention. Does that sound fair?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Can, can we just give you comments on that now?
Sure.
Yeah, I don't know if any other trustees, I just, on the bullet point under trustees, open to a national search but wants an experienced leader who has a strong working knowledge of Nevada accountability and legislation, I guess, I'm a little more, I, I want to convey that we have committed to an open competitive national search. Because it feels like, well, we're open to that, but we really want someone from Nevada. And I just, I, I want to frame that another way, whether it's changing to but, the but to and, I, I don't know how to convey that I'm very interested in us conveying an interest in a high-level national candidate. And I know that everybody on the board doesn't have the same feeling about that on the continuum of local versus national, but I just want to make sure that it's conveyed in a way that we are looking for the absolute best person. And, and yes, we want to make sure that whoever comes has an understanding of how we do things in Nevada, and what our legislative framework is, and our educational funding challenges, and all those kinds of things. But I, I do want to convey, this is honestly an open competitive process. I don't know, any thoughts? Anybody want to add anything?
I couldn't hear.
Okay, okay. And I don't think this is something we need to take a motion on, but I just wanted to, I want to make sure we don't send the message to people, well, we're going through the motions, but we really want someone from Nevada.
No.
That's not, that's not the message.
Yeah, no, we're casting a national net, so just to emphasize your points that we clearly understand that this is a national search, and our aim is to make this a very challenging and difficult decision in a positive way for you. We want the 10 candidates to be so strong that you tell us at the end of the first, that day, that you're like, wow, this is going to be a difficult decision for us to make. We'll know that we've done our job when you tell us that, and so we completely understand. And that statement is also a reflection of having the required certifications, which will be a part of the application, once this individual begins, whether he or she isn't based here in the state of Nevada, they will be required to, to meet the, the, you know, the certification needs.
Okay. Trustee Cottle?
Yeah, when I read that, the first thing I thought was, it doesn't necessarily have to be Nevada. If they're in Colorado and they have experience working with their legislature and their legislative sessions, that's great. It's not exactly the same, but it's very similar. So it's important, that, that's an important point, but it doesn't necessarily have to be Nevada.
Okay.
Great, okay, thank you. Okay. So, and this, this particular is really just to help inform you all about what you're looking for, who you're talking to, what information you're providing to folks, and really what frames the marketing materials and the advertising that you will do.
Absolutely, yeah. It's a preliminary tool to guide us in developing the job profile, the marketing materials that we'll use. And, you know, when the lone finalist or the candidates are officially applying for this, this information will be readily available to them, so they can reflect upon what we've learned, and they can begin processing of how they will begin preparing for the interviews with, with each of you.
Okay. Mr. Noble?
I was just thinking about what you said, and it seems like a way to maybe step around that problem would be to remove geographical markers. So instead of just saying, open to a national search but, because the but does negate the previous part, wants an experienced leader who has a strong working knowledge of accountability and legislative work, maybe. Because that includes Trustee Cottle's point about someone from Colorado, maybe.
Yeah, yeah.
And kind of avoids the negation of the national search.
Sure, absolutely. Yeah, we get to the job profile, there is no verbiage or language that refers specifically to Nevada, such as the overview and the feedback report suggests.
Okay. Okay, anything else on that? I would have to guess that this isn't that different from what you, what you see in other searches.
There's some differences, but, you know, there's also, and it's, the differences are more so what are the expressed challenges? And, you know, what are the opportunities for improvement? I mean, every district has its uniqueness, but as far as the state of the district right now would vary from some of our other current districts. And, you know, without giving clear, you know, specific examples, you know, we've, we're currently engaged in another search where there's five different types of charters, for example, as a part of their local district. So you can understand that adds an entirely different level or layers of complexity, so not, you know, some of the same things are consistent, but again, you know, we'd like to welcome continuous feedback as we continue the process, and if anything does change, we'll certainly update everybody.
I do want to thank everyone who provided input, because I think this is a great list of things that any one of us by ourselves couldn't have come up with. So really appreciate the thoughtfulness of this input.
Yeah, it's been tremendous.
Excellent. We really, we really are grateful to everyone for it.
And if, if, oh, I don't want to move on unless there's other comments about that.
No. Yeah, you can keep going.
Yep, so the advertising plan, again, it's not a marriage by any means, it's just suggested based on best practice for us. If there are other requirements, such as local postings here and with local editorials or state editorials that we overlooked, please let us know. But these are some of the, the common outlets that we post with across the country to, again, conduct a national search. And so when these advertisements are posted, candidates will be redirected to our website, so we can collect and gather all of the application materials that are a part of the job profile for us.
Yes, Dr. Taylor?
Thank you, Madam President. James, is there any, do we want to also include some postings on, in our own Facebook for the school district? Our Facebook, our Twitter, you know, just again, in terms of just making sure it's in front of any local candidate that might be interested?
Absolutely. So what we'll do, similar to when we started the stakeholder meetings and providing the survey opportunity, we'll provide some language and verbiage and the link to our specific URL that's created for this job profile. And so anyone who is interested in if the district, if the district will distribute that information here locally, it'll redirect to our website, just as any of these advertisements will.
Good.
So good idea.
And I would just confirm with Dr. Labic that this is where you would look if you were looking.
Correct.
This is where your colleagues look when they're looking.
Madam President, members of the board, as James mentioned, what we try to point out through this process is what's unique about you? What are the things that you love about your school district that are special for you? And so that way, we can communicate those to candidates. And we try, we know candidates throughout the country, we can call colleagues that, we can say, you know, do you, do you think so-and-so might be a good fit for Washoe? Look, this is what they really love about their district and what they're really looking for in the future. So no, this is very, extremely valuable. And there are some commonalities. You've all been executive searches. I know your presidential search, I'm sure that if you go to another particular university, there are going to be some commonalities. But then also, it speaks to your uniqueness, and that's what we're, we want to garner from this system. What is your uniqueness? Thank you.
Good. Okay. Okay.
And that concludes the summative report. So if there are no other questions, we can move on to the preliminary job profile that we've somewhat alluded to and touched on already. So this document you should have before you, it's just a draft, and again, this is the first iteration. So if all goes as planned, as we just discussed with the approved timeline, we can make the formal changes to this, any of the language verbiage you see in this first page with the, with the bullets that we use to capture from what we've heard from the various stakeholder meetings. I want to give you an opportunity to kind of read through some of this now. If you have suggestions, you know, please let us know, and we're going to be here to help wordsmith and make the changes together.
Well, I have a couple of things, if nobody else has got a point yet. In the first bullet, I was thinking that we would want five or more years of leadership experience in district administration. Because when we talk about school administration, it's, it's a big jump from being a principal to being a superintendent in a district of, you know, 107 schools. So I, I would just make that thought. And then just a couple of points, and I don't have specific language for them, but I think we could beef up the equity and inclusion language. I think that's a really important focus of this district, particularly with our, with our work on disproportionality. And I, I don't see it highlighted as much as I would like to. So equity and inclusion. I also think that on the third bullet, where we're talking about some of the more administrative, ministerial functions, I would add labor relations there. Many of our candidates may have zero experience in a unionized environment, and so we might want to think about labor relations. Another, another piece for me is experience in a comparable-sized district. Now, whether that's mandatory, I don't think it's mandatory, but I think it's a desirable level of experience. I think that we might find somebody wonderful who, you know, is leading a district of, you know, five schools, but it's a whole different ballgame with a billion-dollar budget and, you know, 8,000 employees. So I just, I wanted to throw that out. And then also policy experience and, and policy development. We've been working really hard on being a policy-governed organization and the transparent development of those policies in a public arena. And not everybody is used to doing that in a public arena, so just a thought about those. And again, I don't have language suggestions, but wanted to see if there was some way we could include some of those points. And I'd certainly share with my colleagues. Trustee Cottle?
Thank you. From the first bullet, does it, so it seems like we're kind of going away from anyone that is a business leader or an executive in a large organization, it's not necessarily in education. So we're going away from considering them?
That's a good point.
But, because, because that, I, I'm assuming that you, this was designed based on all the feedback you receive, is just something I'm wondering, because I know that, that's something that we have heard a little bit, is that, is, is it more, what's more important, the educational piece or executive experience of a large organization?
That's a great, great point for us to discuss at this moment.
Yeah, and the same thing with bullet three. Bullet three also, you know, do we want it to say expertise in finance? Or does it have to be expertise in school finance? So that bullet also seems to be leading us away from anyone that it doesn't have, you know, education as their primary background. You know, so it could be military and other things that we're saying that we don't want.
Yeah, I think we need to have that conversation. From, from my perspective, you know, I think we saw in some of the comments that we wanted somebody that had both. You know, from my conversations with educators and other staff and employees, it does matter that people have some experience in the education world in terms of confidence and trust and the ability to build that rapport immediately. And I... And I don't think it's necessarily just an educator. There are lots of people in the district who are not professional educators who might, you know, become great, great superintendents. I think we need to all weigh in on this. Right now is a good time.
And if I may, I can suggest a statement that we've used more recently that kind of captures both. Just food for thought if that's.
Sure, yeah, go ahead.
An innovative leader who has served in a large, complex organization with preferably five or more years of experience as an executive level leader, experience and then in parenthetical notation, experience serving pre-K-12 education systems desired, close parentheses.
That's good. I like that. I like that a lot, James. Thank you.
So we can use that to replace the first, the first bullet.
Yeah, that would be great. Yeah, good.
Yeah, I'll, yeah, I'm capturing everything, so certainly follow up.
Well, and we'll, we'll want to have a motion at some point, so.
Okay.
Okay, Dr. Taylor?
Thank you, Madam President. And thank you trustee Cottrell for pulling, for bringing that out. That's the one, that's the first thing that stuck out to me is we want to cast that. And we had, we had a little bit of a conversation that we don't want to exclude someone and that that may not have, but certainly.
Nonprofit leadership.
Yeah, but it's certainly desired, which leads to another, I have several comments, Madam President. One is, how do we, and maybe the example that you gave just now, James, is, is, is something that we can use in somehow or another. How do we list what, what, what is required and what is desired? Right? I know in the, in the opening paragraph, it says the successful candidate should possess. But like for an example, we desire education, right? But it doesn't, but it didn't, but the way that was stated didn't eliminate someone if that's something that they didn't have, if they were maybe, you know, nonprofit leadership, leadership of an organization, whatever.
Right.
Right? So I'm not sure how the difference between those two. There are a lot of things, I don't know that, there are a lot, there are a lot of things I think that we would desire, but we may not find the candidate that has all of that. But we certainly, there's certainly some things that they must have.
Sure.
How do we delineate in something like this?
And again, I'll go back to the previous statement we made earlier where this is a responsibility of a search firm to identify the talent on behalf of the board and the community, the district. So we have a strong pulse on the non-traditional private sectors, whether they be philanthropic or if they're members of an organization perhaps that started as educators but maybe pivoted professionally, went to, took a different career path. So we're going to gauge both. And this is an exercise for us to, to come to a consensus on what verbiage and language we want to include. And the common words that we generally use are desired, preferred, things of that nature. So that way it's kind of more of a broad stroke where we can keep it more open ended rather than just simplifying in a way that pigeonholes only educators or only non-traditional candidates. So I would say as we're thinking about this, as you see bullets that you'd like to revise or amend, those two words are pretty consistent, you know, consistently used, desired or preferred, they're kind of interchangeable. So you know, as we continue to go through this together in this exercise, I have some other, other items that I can refer to and I'll shoot them over to JJ.
Okay, I think that would, that would take care of that.
So generally staying away from anything being framed as a minimum qualification?
Correct, yeah, because even in the instance where, and I'll use this as an example, you know, sometimes there is doctoral degree preferred, you know? And so that's how you keep, you keep those that do not currently possess a doctoral degree still open to the opportunity for, for applying. So those that are pursuing, you know, and I'm just using that as an example.
Yeah.
Not trying to open a can of worms with that, I'm just using that as an example.
No, and but on that, that's a note that I have, that's something I assume would be covered in the job description?
Correct.
More so?
Yeah.
Not, not for this, okay? Okay, great. Others, we, I, I agree with, with President Simon Holland that I really don't see equity or diversity specifically stated. It can be implied in some of the verbiage here, but I, I think we've, we've made the commitment as a district that we, we want that in the forefront as we move forward. We're, we're a majority minority district. So we want the candidates, prospective candidates to know that, that that's something that's important because that, that isn't going to change anytime soon. And so we do, they need to know what they're getting into and I don't mean that in a bad way, but you know, we want all kids to be successful, you know, like, like some of the community comments and where that, you know, making sure that, you know, we're covering all like students with special needs and, and so on. That's, that's important for us as well. And that came up often, but I think that's something I would like us to see, be more deliberate about stating that and whatever that appropriate manner might be. The other thing that, that I noticed is we say leadership a lot, but we don't really say much about it. We say an innovative leader, a leader who can build consensus. And I don't know how to get more specific about it, but that, it's, it's hard to put your arms around that. But it's, leadership is one of those things that we really need strong leadership.
Sure.
Again, whatever that means, again, I don't know necessarily how to state that, but it just seems like where it is now, it doesn't have an impact one way or another. No one's going to say, well, let's see, I'm not a visionary leader, so I'm out. I mean. So again, I guess I lean to you and your expertise and maybe there isn't a better way and that's part of your calling out, if you will, in the screening as you have conversations with people. But I, one of the earlier conversations we had as a board was it's important to have someone who's a good leader, a strong leader.
Sure.
You know, a, a history of something, not just because I want to be a leader or I say I'm a leader, but it demonstrated, some demonstration of that somehow or another that, that applies, that's relevant to us.
Okay, so I can, you know, we have some samples and of course, we can amend this and because we want to tailor fit this for, for Washoe County. The equity piece, I, I, you know, I can work with my colleague, Dr. Lebo, on what verbiage we think would be appropriate. Because I do understand and I hear you loud and clear on that, but I'll read you one sample of leadership. And we have a variety, but, excuse me, a team builder who has the management style and interpersonal skills to build, motivate and maintain a highly effective executive staff and who can set clear expectations and delegate authority but remains knowledgeable and accountable for the district's overall progress. That's like one aspect or attribute to leadership. And then there's others in here, a visionary leader who can guide the creation of a true.
That's here.
Yeah, so.
The first one you read, if you can put leader in there instead of management? Because those are really two different things.
So the leadership style rather than management?
Yeah, something like that. I would say more with, with, with that. I think the leadership piece is really, I mean, certainly we want them to be able to manage a highly effective team, certainly. But a big component of that is to be able to lead them.
Okay.
I, I do like that. That's my personal, I don't know. I saw some nods from my colleagues, but if we can do that. And the, and the last thing is, I would like to have something in there that talks about building trust. And that might be a part of that leadership piece, but we know that's certainly that we, something that we really need.
Okay.
Again, I don't know where that falls or where that fits, but.
Well, maybe under that visionary leader, just add visionary leader who builds trust and strengthens relationships within the community.
Yeah, that, something like that might work, yeah.
Second one from the bottom?
Yeah, that, it actually fits in nicely.
Just add trust in there.
Yeah, I know, that's great. You know, we have, I can read another sample too, that's somewhat in line, complimentary to that statement. I don't want to create too much discussion about this to just negate what we just discussed. But we talk about ethics, right? So an ethical leader who is a good communicator, who is open and approachable and is actively and enthusiastically involved and visible within the district and community with a long-term commitment to serving the district.
I think you've captured those in.
Okay.
Yeah, I think.
I like the first one better.
Yeah, and I think.
It's more succinct, that last one's fairly long-winded, but I like, I just wanted to throw that out there as an option, so.
Yeah, and a lot of that's in there. Approachable, ethical leader, enthusiastically involved, that's in, that's in one of your bullets. And then serving the Washoe community for the long term is in another one. With regard to the discussion about educator, business person, et cetera, one of the things I have heard from school leaders is that they want to make sure that the person has an administrative credential. There, there are a variety of emergency situations in which in the past we have had superintendents who did not have an administrative credential and it's, it's apparently an issue. I just want to identify that. And maybe that's something that goes in the job description and the MQs, the, the qualification and willingness to obtain a Nevada administrative credential.
That's correct.
Okay.
I guess the only ever comment I had.
I'm sorry, I didn't realize you weren't finished.
Oh, no, that's okay. That's okay. I had a list, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
The, the term, the, the long-term, we know the average life expectancy, if you will, I hate to use that term because they're not dying, but I guess their career here is dying, I don't know. That could be good or bad. It's three years.
Brutal.
And so I don't know if that's how we want, I mean, certainly we don't want someone who's here today gone tomorrow.
Right.
But I don't, I don't know, I guess I'm open, I like to have, just have some conversation, I got my attention anyway.
I, I think just again, from one perspective, that leaving it vague, saying long-term, those are conversations we would have with finalists, you know? How long do you see yourself being here? And I, I, I don't think that's something we put in the profile and specify that it means five years or whatever. Just that's my one.
No, and that, that's why I circled it, like, do you want to say that? So yeah.
Yeah, and trustee Taylor, to that point, what I would say is that when we speak with candidates, our own professional intuitions, if we were to gather from speaking with any of the candidates that give us the impression that they are seeking this as a stepping stone or a block for advancing to another opportunity in a very short period of time, I simply tell the candidates, thanks but no thanks, this isn't the place for you. And if you recall, you know, speaking to our references when we first worked, started working together, all of the sitting superintendents that we have supported the recruitment of are still in his or her respective seats today, which is something that we, you know, we pride ourselves on that, that fact because, you know, that's our, our reputation too. And again, we're not going to love you and leave you beyond this search. We're going to continue to work with the superintendent and ensure that he or she is committed for the long haul.
And it is a pain point in this community that we have had folks who did use this as a stepping stone.
Yeah.
President Holland, members of the governing board, you can also develop some questions that are related around that area also, once you get to the questioning period. And let's say that you narrow them down from six to two, then you can follow up a little bit stronger in the question with that particular piece. But I think James said it best that our track record speaks for itself. We have people that are still in their positions. And, and so I think that the more we learn about your district, I think that's going up higher on our radar screen as we talk to people because we all know individuals that are looking for the next career jump. And certainly we don't want to talk, be talking to those individuals. Or if we do, we want to be completely clear, this board is looking for a long-term commitment. Someone that I, what I say becomes a fabric of your community.
So I would think so, that being the case, I would, I would, I would not want to have the term, the phrase, long-term in there and let it be dealt with in the ways that, that have been mentioned.
Ah, I'd still like it. I'd still like it there. I don't know.
Okay. That's it for me. Thank you very much.
I'm sorry. And, and other people may feel differently about that. We can certainly, yeah. Trustee Cottrell?
Yeah, I, I want to kind of go back to what you had mentioned, President Simon Holland, about the administrative license. I'm just not familiar with it and how difficult, A, how difficult it is to obtain and B, does Nevada recognize other states' administrative licenses? Because I only bring that up because we talk about an open process, bringing in a number of candidates. But if that administrative license piece is not exactly easy to do, we may end up not getting as many outside candidates as we would want. And then the, the process is tilted more towards the Nevada-based finalists. So I'm just, I don't know a lot about that, about the administrative piece.
Yeah, Emily can talk. And my deal would be not that they have to have it now, but that they would be willing to obtain it.
So in statute, the superintendent doesn't have to have it, but we would have to delegate responsibility for all academic functions to someone who does have an administrative credential. For the most part, it's, it's probably not going to be an issue for people to bring an administrative credential from one state to another. Nevada does have a framework for issuing provisional licenses if perhaps there's a parent and family engagement course that we require that hasn't been completed under another credential. But if you hold one today in another state, it's probably not going to be a big deal to transfer it. Depending on the industry that you come from, in order to obtain an administrative credential, it may require some level of additional schooling up to a full master's program. So if you are a career changer and you're not in any way connected to education, so you likely don't have any formal education in your undergrad or other master's programs, you'll probably need to complete a whole new program. But it just depends kind of how close you are, right? If we, if we're looking to somebody who's in higher education today, they probably have taken a little bit different path than somebody who's, you know, the CEO of a gaming corporation or something like that. So there's kind of a continuum.
And we can certainly have more conversation about that with our labor groups and others who, you know, have, have expressed a concern, so, and our leadership team.
Yeah, I would say that if that's the direction we went, the district would probably have to be willing to cover that for that individual. Yeah, I, I think that's okay too. I, I just want to make sure that we don't unintentionally limit the scope of the search to where we are only getting licensed administrators from Nevada. Because I don't think that's where we wanted to be initially.
Right.
So it's, it's more of a conversation. I just wanted to bring it up. We're going to actually insert that into the profile that they either have one or.
No, I, I think that would be in something that we would talk about in the job description. And again, it would be, it's sort of like, you know, the city of Reno hired a fire chief that didn't have the minimum qualifications, but they said you have, you know, whatever, a year or two years to complete that. And, you know, it, it does happen, so. Yeah, so we, so we've mentioned several things that it sounds like we're going to have to have more wordsmithing on. Oh, I'm sorry, Vice President Raymond.
Thank you. I just had a couple. Have you had any experience including any language about experience working with boards? Or not necessarily school boards, but just any type of, you know, experience in that relationship of working?
With a board?
With a board?
I'm just trying to think back to recent experiences. I don't know that we have necessarily stated anything generically with, you know, just a board. Not necessarily a school board, but perhaps, you know, like, like the airport authority board or whatever.
Nonprofit boards.
Nonprofits. You know, it's something we could include if that's something of interest to, to the board this afternoon. Because there are a couple of things here that I think we still should tease out, you know, around the equity and the inclusion piece, policy experience. You know, we captured some of the other changes which we'll send, but you know, I think what our aim should be is to arrive to, you know, the final verbiage if we could. So that way we can post this tomorrow. So if there are specific things that come to mind, we could do that together today, that would be awesome.
I don't feel, I struggled a little bit with whether to even bring it up. You clearly talk about that communication and the relationship part of it. And it wouldn't at all be a requirement or. Working in the nonprofit field and, and having been part of hiring executive directors, that's a huge job qualification for an executive director to have experience working with a nonprofit board, but this is different, so.
It might be, it might be an interview question.
Yeah, maybe that's a good place for it. That's a good idea.
We do, excuse me, we do have a fairly robust item bank of potential questions you can glean from, for the in-person interviews.
Great.
You can take a much deeper dive with candidates in person around some of these topics.
That makes perfect sense, yeah, thank you. I think the, the big kind of lightning rod issues to me are the, that kind of commitment to the community, that long-term thing, I just think that does come up a lot. And I understand Dr. Taylor's reasoning about excluding it, but I in some ways feel like by leaving it in there, it does demonstrate to the community that that's something that we are hearing from them. So I'm definitely for leaving it in. I think the other one is that, kind of that academic, you know, administrative person versus the outside person. And I had the same kind of thought when I first read this as trustee Cottrell about that first bullet. And I like the idea of changing it. I just want to make sure though, still it's not, that it's balanced and not favoring the other side too much either because it's certain. because it certainly is a split issue for people. And then the other thing on here that I just kind of saw a little funny with me was progressive leader. And that word just has sort of a, a different connotation. I know what you're meaning by it, but I wondered if it could just be changed to like forward-looking or I, um, I don't want it to, to dissuade anyone or send a message to the community that we, I don't know. I'm probably overthinking it, but I, I think I know what, that you meant forward-looking, you know, forward-thinking. But, um, having just gone through a revision of our sex policy, we want to be clear what we're talking about here.
She just doesn't want to answer the emails, that's all.
That's it.
Okay.
Thank you.
No, thank you.
Trustee Manetto?
As a retired educator, I have been through, uh, superintendents who were business-based and superintendents who were education-based. And just from my point of view, I felt like the education-based, I don't know if the word is better, but they were more in tune with the district in that they realized that it's a community we're dealing with, it's children we're dealing with, it's not a business. And I just had to say that.
As an educator, we respect that. Absolutely.
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay, others? Trustee Calvert, Trustee Kelly, any? Okay, so, um, I know you want to get this finalized and we would like to, I think, see what it is that's going out tomorrow. Should we take a break and give you a little time to wordsmith?
Sure.
And then we could come back so that we could, okay, so that we could, um,
That's fine.
Actually adopt. Yes. Okay, and we have some more public comment?
Todd Bailey?
Um, I appreciate your indulgence, Madam President. Um, specifically, my point is on the issue of the administrative certificate. I absolutely think that should be required and I think there should be a time clock on that about if we do hire someone that isn't, does not have that administrative certificate. Maybe it's, if it's from out of state, it's actually not too difficult to get a Nevada certificate if you are certified in another state. However, if you have no certification whatsoever, if you've never been an educator, never really been in a school district or administrative building, what you end up with is Pedro Martinez. For years, a bookkeeper administered this school district and that absolutely should never happen again, ever. And I just want to emphasize, and Mr. Cottle, it's okay because that's a complicated process. You know, familiarizing yourself of what it takes to be an administrator, get an administrative certificate. But that's why the success of this district for so many years was the responsibility of Tracy Davis. Because she was the one who was legally responsible for that success and every year had to legally sign off on that despite whatever flaws she may have, which I'm aware of. But I think to avoid those kind of conversations in the future, please make that a requirement. There must be an administrative certificate for that person. If they don't have it, there must be a time clock that they do get it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Bailey.
And I agree with you, Ms. Manetto. People from an education background make better superintendents. They do.
Thank you, Mr. Bailey. Okay, um, this is boot camp, but we will take, um, how about a, um, what, 20-minute break? James, would that give you enough time to wordsmith and bring something back?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, um, with no objection, we'll be in recess for the next 20 minutes. All right, thank you, JJ, and thank you, uh, JG Consulting for getting this turned around so quickly so we can have an approved document to go out on the wires tomorrow, or wirelessly. So do you want to walk us through, James, what, uh, changes you've made?
Sure. Um, so the first bullet, thank you for the opportunity to do this. Uh, the, the first bullet was changed. So, um, as stated previously, an innovative leader who has served in a large, complex organization with preferably five or more experi, uh, five or more years of experience as an executive-level leader in, uh, open parenth, paren, excuse me, parenthetical notation, experienced serving pre-K-12 education systems, desired closed parentheses. Uh, that was the first. And I'm working from my most recent one, so I'm trying to recall each of the changes. A team builder who has a leadership style and interpersonal skill.
Wait, wait, can we go back up to bullet three? So, um, so Scott had mentioned taking out the word "school finance", um, but we wanted to just discuss because we weren't sure whether that was a consensus of the whole group. And, and actually, um, for me, it also speaks to school funding or education funding. That it may not be so much about finance, but about education funding. So I don't know what, I, I think we want to have a conversation to finalize that third bullet point. Any, any thoughts? Maybe take out the word "school", so expertise in school finance, maybe comma "education funding", district budget management. It's, uh, labor relations, you added that, and policy and legislative engagement. Those are great. Yes, ma'am?
Uh, thank you, Madam President. So we would keep in-school finance? Is that what you, or we would take that?
I was saying experience in finance and then education funding or something. Scott was the one who, who raised it, so I defer to Mr. Kelly.
Yeah, that, and that's what I was thinking too. If you just took out the word "school", so it said expertise in finance. I'm not sure about taking out the word "district". Certainly budget management stays in there. I don't know if we want to keep "district" or not, but I think those are the two biggest changes that I'd seen with those two words.
And would you, what do you all think about adding "education funding"? Andrew, you have your light on?
Yeah, I'm good with that. Uh, for district budget management, I was thinking about, so district organizational or organization budget management, something that doesn't seem like it's geared specifically towards schools. But I like the idea of, uh, something regarding school funding, having, and having some expertise and understanding on how that is done, but also then finance. Those are two separate, two separate things.
Okay, how about this? Expertise in school funding, comma, finance, comma, organizational budget management, and then the rest stays the same?
What if we just said budget management?
Well, because it's different managing a department budget.
It could be your personal budget.
Yeah, yeah. Vice President Raymond?
I like that, um, and don't have any changes, but I just wanted to bring up that we're making these efforts in the first and the third bullet point to kind of, uh, separate out the education stuff. But then the second bullet very clearly says a proven instructional leader. So do we care that that still is asking for a level of experience in education or?
Well, we're talking about experience serving pre-K-12 education systems. So that could be a consultant, it could be a person from a nonprofit. They could still be an instructional leader. I don't know. What does everybody else feel? Yes, sir.
So, yeah, I think we can, um, do kind of an either-or-or both situation if we use those two words, desirable, preferable, for those things because, yeah, exactly. And then we can include everything we want that way. And I would like to also bring up another point and ask you guys potentially about the inclusion of another bullet point related specifically to student population outreach. Because I do think that's important enough to be addressed separately from all the other community-related engagements.
Okay, let's, um, so let's finish off the thought on bullet two. What would the language be there? A proven instructional leader is desired with a track record? I don't know.
Can I make a suggestion? So after students, just before the semicolon, comma, preferred?
Sure. Okay, okay. And then, and then in the third bullet, expertise in school funding, comma, finance, comma, organizational budget management? And then the rest of that stays the same? Everybody has to nod for me to, okay, okay, good. All right. And then, um, let's keep going. So the, the team builder one is unchanged. Or no, you did add that one. Yeah, you added that one. Yeah, that's a good one. Um, and you added the, growing a culture of inclusion and equity. I think that's good. Oh, it's just below the team builder one. It's the next one down. One, two, three, four. It's the fifth one. Unwavering commitment. Okay, um, then the next, exceptional communicator. Okay. Stop us if you want to change anything. Experience in strategic planning. Okay. We changed the progressive leader to forward-thinking leader. How about on the, on the student item, or, well, you wanted to make it a separate bullet. I was thinking on the visionary leader who builds trust and strengthens, strengthens relationships with students and within the community. But we can make it a separate. How would you like to phrase that, Nathan?
So, uh, I do think it should be a separate bullet point because in general, I think that building connections with the community is also important enough to be kept separate. I think lumping them in together might lead to some confusion. In terms of specific wording, I'm definitely open to, uh, ideas. But I think maybe something related to, um, student voice inclusion and, uh, or partnership or something of the sort, um, engagement maybe?
So maybe, um, let's see. Demonstrated commitment to, um, including student voice, including and supporting student voice, something like that. Vice President Raymond had her, her light on.
I completely agree how important it is. I'm wondering if, if this is the place for it, just like we talked about earlier with kind of where, when you get into interview questions. I mean, I think, um, you know, that I don't, like, to me, family engagement is really important. So can I get a separate bullet point for family engagement? And then, and I understand, like I said, that this is, I absolutely agree it's critical. If we're also kind of talking about that we're not, you know, eliminating individuals who haven't, uh, worked in education or, or maybe wouldn't have had that experience with student engagement, how does that work into it? So I'm okay with it in here. I'm just, it is one of those ones that to me falls a little bit. Could be an interview question to further, uh, gain information about that level of experience or could be a bullet point.
Others? Trust, oh, go ahead, Nathan, and then, Trustee Cottle?
Yeah, no, Trustee Raymond, I totally get that. The reason why I do think it's important to put it in here is because they said that this is really the place to show them what makes our district unique. Our district is unique in that it takes the time to listen to student voice. I'm certain that other districts do similar things that we do in terms of family engagement and community outreach. And I'm certain.
No, we're, we're among the nation's leaders. Yeah.
Oh, yeah, no, we do wonderful things with that as well. We could, yeah. But student voice is definitely one of the things that makes us distinct and it makes us stand out. And I think it's important for them to know it right from the get-go.
I'll put that on your Georgetown recommendation. Trustee Cottle and then Dr. Taylor?
Yeah, I'm, I'm torn. Uh, I see both points on why it's important and why maybe it shouldn't be here because I could also see the argument from a teacher. It says, there really isn't anything in here that talks about the relationship this individual's going to have with our teachers. And then are we, are we putting everything in the right place versus is there a different way to address it? So I do, I do see both, but I also want to make sure that this is concise so that it's clear on what we're, what we're looking for. And then anything else that maybe we want to touch on, we just make sure to emphasize it in interview questions and then that will help us become comfortable on if the candidates are a right fit for everything that we want to look at.
Dr. Taylor?
Uh, thank you, Madam President. I think all of these comments actually are really good. And when I think about, uh, student voice and when I think about teachers, which are really, if you, if you think about students, I should say students, not student voice. But when we think about students and teachers, if there are any two categories of the Washoe County School District community that are most important to us, it would be the students and the teachers, I would, I would think. And maybe it isn't as much about, um, wanting a commitment to student voice as it is wanting a commitment to students. It isn't a, we don't want, we don't necessarily, it's not the commitment to the program. It's a commitment to the, um, the entity, I guess, if you will. So maybe it's, it's, um, what we would like and so that we don't exclude those who may not have an educational, um, background. If we would like, um, a commitment to engaging, uh, students and teachers and all members of the Washoe County.
And families.
And fam, I mean, you said, I mean, a commitment to engaging all members of the Washoe County School District community, including students, teachers, and families. Or, or maybe the verbiage is a little backwards. But we really want them to engage, we want them, we want a commitment to engaging these populations, um, in our district. Not as mu, not the programs, but the populations.
Okay, uh, Trustee Kelly?
And I was thinking maybe to piggyback on that a little bit. The second to last bullet where it says, so I'll just read what I was thinking. A visionary leader who builds trust, comma, strengthens relationships, comma, and engages with. And then we can list staff, students, families. We can list a couple, four or five that we like. And then we can, that way, it's, it's, we're taking all what we're talking about now, putting it into a bullet, expanding it a little bit with, with engages. That might be a compromise to at least consider.
Okay, thoughts? Yes, Nathan?
I personally would think that is an acceptable solution because that does put students on the same level as teachers and staff and, uh, community on the level of outreach. But I do think it is worth designating a specific portion to address that. And so I think that's a very, actually, a good idea. Thank you, Trustee Kelly.
Uh, so it would be something like a visionary leader who builds trust, comma, strengthens relationships, comma, and engages?
Uh, engages with, um, students, district staff, families, community. We can list.
And nurtures existing partnerships. Okay. Yes, ma'am?
Yes, ma'am, just speaking to, uh, Trustee Cottle's comments. Perhaps teachers is something we should specifically designate.
Versus staff?
Mm-hmm. Not that all staff isn't important because of course they are, but maybe it's students, uh, teachers, and other members of the Wash, of the, of the WCSD community or something like that.
Yeah, you know, we'll make somebody mad if we leave them out. I, I like the term educators just because it encompasses more than.
Educators, that's everybody.
And support staff.
Educators.
Takes care of everybody.
I think if we say educators, I think, I think, I think our support staff are educators.
Okay, do you want to take another shot at that, Scott?
A visionary leader who builds trust, strengthens relationships, and engages with students, educators, maybe support staff, family, family members.
I would just say families.
Families, uh, the kitchen ladies.
Yeah, bus drivers.
Bus drivers. Okay. And the, and then, and then finishes with, uh, nurtures existing partnerships.
Okay, did you get that, James?
Yeah, may I?
Read back?
We read?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, a visionary leader who builds trust, strengthens relationships, and engages with students, educators, and families, and nurtures existing partnerships.
I think you, you were throwing in students, educators, families, and members of the community? Okay. Students, educators, families, and members of the community, and nurtures existing partnerships.
Okay.
Okay, you want to read back what you have there?
Sure. Um, a visionary leader who builds trust, strengthens relationships, and engages with students, educators, and families, and members of the community, and nurtures existing relations, partnerships.
Yeah, I would just take out the "and" between educators, between families. Let's see, it would say students, educators, families, and, yeah, okay.
Yeah, so a visionary leader who builds trust, strengthens relationships, and engages... Yeah, so a visionary leader who builds trust, strengthens relationships, and engages with students, educators, families, members of the community, and nurtures existing partnerships.
That's fine. Yeah.
I mean, there's a lot of ands, so I was.
Yes, there are, there are. Okay, um, so what we have changed from what you presented to us, um, on the second bullet, we added "desired" at the end?
Preferred.
Or preferred, okay? Preferred. In the third bullet, we're changing it to say expertise in school funding, finance, organizational budget management, and the rest of it stays the same. And then everything stays the same down to the second bullet from the bottom, visionary leader who builds trust, strengthens relationships, and engages with students, educators, families, and members of the community, and nurtures existing partnerships. Okay? Anything else? Last call. Okay, does somebody want to make a motion to the effect of what I just read?
I'm moved.
Thank you, Scott. Trustee Kelly, second by Trustee Minneto. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye, any opposed? Motion carries, great, thank you for the quick turnaround to get that done.
Good work, no, this is team effort.
Okay.
Team effort.
So we have completed today, uh, we did the timeline, and, um, we did, of course, put on the record that the survey is still open at washoeschools.net, and we encourage people to continue to give us feedback. Uh, the application or this job profile has been adopted, and that will be launched tomorrow.
So we'll need to update, if you look at the draft, the dates, uh, will need to reflect what we approved?
Yes.
Today, so that will be updated this evening and provided to, to the district first thing tomorrow.
Okay, and then we talked a little bit about, uh, steps in the process, that we want to make sure we have time for some community meet and greets, and we'll, uh, structure that, um, in the weeks to come. We will see the job description back on January 28th for approval by the board, and we also have some outstanding legal questions to review with regard to, um, when and how much, applications become public. Okay, is there anything else that we need to cover today?
No, some of the other items included within the job profile are some of the basic, uh, pieces of information, so contact information for the executive search team, some of the standard, uh, requirements that we require for the candidates to submit to us, letter of interest, resume, list of references, college/university transcripts. The verification form is just a, a, a check the box for us, and it's, again, it's a layer of redundancy in addition to all the internal processes that the district will require the candidates to complete, but it gives us an idea, if there's anything that's not checked within this particular section of the job profile, we can have those conversations with the candidates, so nothing really out of the ordinary, it's a pretty standard part for the course, information.
Okay, all right, um, yes, go ahead, Vice President Raymond.
Sorry, I know this was in your last presentation, now I can't remember it. When is the, like, the references and the background check stuff happening, is that with your committee, when they whittle it down to 10?
So we'll do some high-level screening and vetting of the candidates to ascertain if there's any outlying issues or things that we need to, to take, uh, to have a better understanding of what those issues may be, um, but as far as the third-party background check, that typically occurs once we've identified the top two or three finalists.
Okay.
So we'll, we'll engage that third party, Baker Ubanks, to complete the background check in addition to all of the screening that the district will conduct, it's just another layer of redundancy, but it'll be the top two or three, whatever that number is at that point in time.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, we also did talk about, um, uh, making the, uh, names of the executive search committee, uh, public, so.
We'll provide that in the same email communication with this update.
Great, and just for the public record, the board doesn't know who those people are, so.
Right, no.
We haven't had any, uh, any involvement in that at all, okay? JJ, did you have something? Okay, all right, so if there is nothing else, um, public comment?
Todd Bailey?
Mr. Bailey?
Thank you, Madam President. I'm just trying to keep up with everything that happened here today with regard to JG Consulting, and specifically, um, did the board approve the verification for superintendent form, or is that gonna be on the 28th? And also, if a candidate checks any of the boxes on the verification for superintendent, does that automatically knock them out of consideration, consideration for the position? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bailey. That is an internal document for JG Consulting that they use, and it kind of duplicates, uh, what our own, uh, background process will determine, but it's a, it's an early warning system, and as Mr. Gara just said on the record, uh, if any of those boxes are checked, that, uh, triggers a conversation, and it may or may not exclude someone automatically from further consideration, is that, is that a fair statement?
That's accurate.
Okay, okay. Is there any other public comment, JJ? Okay, then hearing no public comment, we will be adjourned for our work session, and we will be back at 4 o'clock for our regular meeting. Thank you, good job.
Yeah, likewise.